I'd like to call this meeting to order this morning. This is the City of Shelton's study session, and so welcome everybody. First item on our business would be to report to you, the public, on the activities that we have planned as commissioners this week. So I usually start with Commissioner Moore, and so I will today.
Okay. Earlier, I attended a business training program informational workshop that is sponsored by EDC, and it's sounds really great. It's a great program, so if anyone is interested in starting your own business, I would really recommend applying for this program. It's ongoing and a great opportunity for those who are looking to start their own businesses. I, let's see, you can find the information on it by looking in online at Enterprise for Equity. It's part of a community development grant that the state has given to Mason County because of our difficulties with the mills closing down, so it's a great opportunity. Strongly advise people to attend that if possible. I have, tomorrow I have an Executive Housing Coalition Board Meeting, as well as a regular Housing Coalition Board Meeting. On Wednesday, I will be attending the after-hours, that is at Treasures, which is sponsored by Mason General Hospital Foundation, and that is it for the week.
Thank you there Commissioner McCall.
To C, I will be attending my left board meeting, and that is law enforcement officers, firefighters. And we manage the pensions and the retirements for the firefighters and the police officers that are retired in the city. Wednesday, I'm going to be missing, we're getting, there's going to be a Port and County, Port County and City Commissioners Meeting, open to the public, and we're just gonna, I'm not exactly sure what we're going to be discussing, but I won't be there because I have an obligation with being a judge out at Fredeka, which is a marketing class at the high school, and they're going to be doing a competition on Wednesday, so I've been asked to be a judge on that, so I'm really excited. So I'll be there, I can't make the Port County and City Commissioner Meeting. And Thursday, and then I'm going to be at the after-hours on Wednesday, and Thursday my brief with, briefing with Ryan, and that's it for me.
All right. Commissioner Moore reminded me that she was also going to be attending the, the Port, meeting at the Port, it's an all-commission meeting. We've been doing it every year, we get together right at the beginning of the year, and so I reminded them of that one, and.
Thank you.
All right.
What time is that?
It's 10 o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
And, so my week is, tomorrow I will be, which is Tuesday, I will be on MaceCom Board, and we'll have our meeting tomorrow at 3:00. Wednesday, I will be probably attending that chamber after-hours because I get out of my business and I walk one block and it's right there, and so, that one makes it pretty easy for me at Treasures. On that day, I'll be also attending the Port All-Commission Meeting. Thursday, Economic Development Council Board Meeting, and maybe something will happen on Friday, but I do not know at this time. So that completes our weekly commission reports. Next is the opportunity for public comment, and so, what we do is ask if there's anybody signed in to speak today.
We have Marilyn Vogler.
Okay.
Commissioners, Marilyn Vogler, 420 East Poplar. Last week, I spoke to you about how our water rates encourage or don't conservation. This week, I want to talk about how the water and sewer rates impact affordable housing. The Growth Management Act requires policies and development regulations to encourage or ensure affordable housing, but housing units, which is what this addresses, are only one aspect of the problem of affordability. Affordable housing involves two parts. It involves what you pay for your renter mortgage, and it involves what you pay for basic utilities. Affordable means not having to spend more than 30% of your monthly income on housing including basic utilities. I don't have separate figures for Shelton, but in Mason County, a third of our residents have to spend more than that, and so by definition, they are cost burdened. We need a rate structure for water and sewer that makes it possible for people to reduce expenses and to keep expenses within this affordability limit by being careful and responsible with water use. We need a base level, and this is what I talked about last week, that provides enough water for health and sanitation, that is either priced very low for everyone, or that provides a rate break similar to what we give seniors, low-income seniors, on their property tax, something that would allow a person to qualify for a low-income utility rate, not for unlimited usage, but for that basic level to, to allow for health and sanitation. This doesn't have an impact just on the people we're talking about needing such a break. It has an impact, an economic impact on our community, because if I have to spend 60 or 70% of my monthly income simply on housing and utilities, I have very little disposable income to spend on things from the merchants in the community, on recreation programs, on movies, on haircuts, on clothing, on foods, on that, on food, on that, that kind of thing. And so it's important, not only for the people impacted by low wages, it's important for our local merchants as well. And so, I know the city staff is working on a water rate study. I would urge that in that study, you consider not only the amount we pay, but the structure that calculates how we pay that amount. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, you push off on that one there. Oh, God. We're trying, yeah, we're trying, we're trying a new method here. I like, I like the ding 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 dong thing, you know, but, yeah, it's, anyway, thank you for your comments.
Reminds me I have to shut off my phone.
Yeah. Is there anybody else today?
There is none.
Okay. So, at this point, we have no consent agenda, and we have nothing on our action agenda, but we do have some items under the business agenda, and that will be talked about by Craig Gregory, and he is our Public Works Director, and this will be concerning Basin III.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. Public Works staff is seeking direction on the Basin III project. If it is the Commission's priority to start construction in 2017, staff would need to move forward in a timely fashion. Staff would need to review plans from parametrics and make modifications to those plans. Other work would be to update the environmental permits, obtain construction license agreements from all property owners for access to replace laterals, construction bid and advertisement. And the approximate timeframe for this work would be around six months. But if it is not the Commission's priority to move forward at this time, this is going to be a fairly costly venture to get those things done, to go to construction, in the amount of about $125,000 over the next six months, so it would need to be a priority to move forward with the funding that we have now, with the assumption that city staff will continue to look for alternative funding sources in the forms of grants to offset the 4.3 million that we right now have in loans for this construction. And we do have a slight modification to the handout that you have. The actual Department of Ecology loan is 4.37 million, not 4.47 million, and the Centennial Grant is actually 1.97 million instead of 1.87 million. So we have about $100,000 more in the grant than we do in the loan that we first anticipated.
I, I would like to start the conversation today on this, just to let everybody in the public kind of know what my involvement has been on this. When I was elected mayor five years ago, we had just kind of completed all of our major basin projects except Basin III, and at that time, we were facing, we're in the recession, and we knew that we had to hit the pause button, I think, on jumping right into Basin III at that time, and so I started asking questions and, on how to address this, and the City of Shelton was the leader in forming the Sewer Funding Coalition, which is a coalition of, it was 30 other cities in the state, and we are on the radar with Association of Washington Cities to continue that process and seeking grant funding for cities like ours. That's for all cities, but by, by starting that, we had favor in the eyes of many of the legislators. I spoke to the governor personally, met several times with Maya Bellin, the head of the Department of Ecology, and I pretty much committed that we were going to do the project, but we had to have substantial grant money. And I looked at this summer, this year, as, as, they, they literally gave us grace for like five years on that project, from my take on this, and so I feel we are committed to complete the project. The good news is it will be the last of the major basins, there's another basin or so that we have to do, but it's the last, and the Department of Ecology has already agreed that we can hopefully mix that into our rate structure and probably not have to borrow money to do the other basins, but I feel it is our, that, that at this time, it is, it would be the time that we have to commit to start that project. And we have grant money to do that with, already, and I, we are, and you can speak maybe on that, we are proposing a $4.5 million budget request from the capital budget process over in the legislature this year again, and we are going, I will personally be knocking down the doors and handing out the tracts and moving forward with this, like I have done, but at this point, if we can't get substantial more grant money, we still have to do it, and it's a priority, and it's, I believe that we have other grant opportunities so that we should be able to, within this next couple of year period or whatever, be able to do this, and so I would say that I would think we need to start and move forward because, again, my soles and my feet are getting a little bit thin on walking around, and we've got some success from that. We've gotten an extra few million dollars in grant money, and we're going to go back over and approach it again, and so maybe we can get all the other 4.5 million, maybe it'll be a little bit short, but you can kind of only do what you do, and I feel that we have really been blessed by the Department of Ecology giving us that, that, that extension, but now's the time for us as a city to step up and complete that major basin project, and so I would support moving forward on this.
What are sewer laterals?
They are the pipes that come off of the sewer main to the individual houses.
Okay, all right. And can we use, we have about 3.4 million in grant money right now, can we use that for those, for that $125,000, and can we start using that for, to start the project?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, all right. Well, we need to get it done, and we have 3.4 million, hopefully some more, so let's get going on it.
Yes, I believe this project is very much overdue. I think we stretched it out about as long as we can, because I see those repair trucks over there all the time. One thing that I would like definitely is to continue the efforts to requesting more money, and I think if we do that as a united front, maybe we'll be even more successful than we have been, and it's, you know, it's great that we have, have been able to get those additional grant monies, but we do know that construction costs keep rising, so yes, the sooner the better. The only thing else that I would like to mention is I would really like to continue looking for additional grant dollars for some of the paving projects that we need to do over in that area too. I know some of it will be covered with the grant, but I think if we partner with other agencies, maybe we can get the streets all, in that whole area paved, and the sidewalks, and those are badly needed up there as well. I drive down Birch Street frequently.
You live in that area, don't you?
Frequently, and not my end, but the other end is very bad shape, so I know that the people who live over there would be thankful. No, and I have said all along, don't pave my street first, but we will, we will be paving as a result of doing this basin, so, all the grant monies we can get.
In our Public Works update, we will visit the capital improvement plan.
Great.
For streets, and also the other utilities, so we'll update on that.
And I, I'm sorry I interrupted you, but I know as well that in my conversations with the Conservation District, that there has been some interest in partnering with some of the stormwater issues that we have over in that area too, so I think it can solve a lot of problems, so, yes, my vote is yes, let's go.
So at this point, there, City Manager?
So, if you concur, we'll bring it forward next week and place it on the action agenda, and then you can take public comment at that time.
Okay.
If that works.
I think that is the proper way to do this, and so I think that concludes our questions.
Thank you.
Now, don't move, because you're next.
Okay.
Okay, unless I, I'm wrong, but I think you're coming up. So, okay, we do concur to place this on the action agenda for 2017, and at this point, we're into the administration report section, and Craig Gregory is going to give us an update.
Well, the first update we have for you is we have a new employee, first day today. He is our new associate engineer, hopefully being trained to become our city engineer in the future, Logan Brady.
Yeah, there we go. But no other times do we clap, okay.
Logan was born and raised in Shelton, attended Shelton schools, and then left Shelton to go work in copper mines in Arizona and Utah. He moved back to Shelton in 2009 and attended South Puget Sound, and is currently enrolled and finishing up his degree at St. Martin's University, so we are very happy to have him on and filling a need for us in the engineering department.
I think I remember, a few years ago, when Logan was toddling, and I think I was playing volleyball with his mother or something at a gym, and there was a couple little kids running around over there, and so I think I remember him from then. Was that you? Yeah, you were probably toddling around over there, right? Well, I'm glad that you're here, and we, we hope the best with this, and we greatly appreciate you coming aboard.
Welcome. Can I share a little bit? I told him I was going to embarrass him.
No, I already did.
I was going to try and move past this quickly so we could not embarrass Logan today.
No, 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 we need to bring it up. No, no, what do you know about Logan now?
Oh, I know a lot about Logan. And I'm just excited when, did you decide to go to college after you worked in the copper mail?
Yes.
Yes, you decided you wanted a college degree, yeah. When our kids go away to college, or they go to local college and they come back into Shelton to work, that says a lot about the progress of our city and the ones that are wanting to come back and make it better. We have a great, great city here, and we're gonna, it's gonna even improve more. My daughter babysat Logan when he was little. She has lots of stories, and I remember him in diapers, so that's all I have to say.
That was before toddling, okay.
Well, I would like to say also that I remember Logan from his younger.
We all do.
Younger days, he was a classmate of my youngest daughter, so, welcome.
Yes, we're thrilled.
All right, thank you. Are you done? You had more to report on.
We goofed him up. We have more than Logan's past to talk about. So Public Works continues to work through and organize past projects, look for solutions to outstanding issues with those projects. Hopefully, here over the next few months, we will start to finish some of those projects up, and Tracy's point about looking at some of the paving projects, we are going to take an extensive look at our capital improvement plan for all of the departments within Public Works. We have some plans in place right now, but I'm not sure that as a staff, we fully agree with the priorities that have been set forth for Public Works, so we will be taking a look at those capital improvement plans and bringing recommendations forward on all of the departments here within the next month or so. Public Works is also working on a complete streets application, and this is a TIB Transportation Improvement Board Award. It is not a grant or a loan, it is an award up to the amount of $250,000 that the city would be able to utilize in any way, shape, or form that they feel is necessary. We are already doing most of the elements of the complete streets, and the ones that we are not doing, like sidewalk rating and pavement rating, we are starting on, so we are moving forward with trying to get that together for this year to submit our application. That was a, Steve Gorchester, that used to be the director at TIB, met with us and told us that would be a great opportunity to, for us to kickstart our streets program.
Great.
So we are moving forward with that. With the crews, the street department has partnered with Mason County Public Works to lower the cost of de-icer that we have been putting on the streets that seem to be helping immensely. We were paying $3.27 a gallon. We are now with the partnership with Mason County and their delivery schedule, we are paying $1.58 a gallon.
Wow, wow.
So, huge cost savings for that, and that is calcium chloride that we are putting out on the streets at this time. We are also, have gotten our first couple of deliveries for bio solids, and those seem to be going very well, and we will be bringing back a financial report at the end of the first quarter of '17, so you will be able to see what we have brought in and what that is doing for the sewer department. We are also out replacing pedestrian crossing heads to the countdown ADA heads that will need to go in, and we are about halfway through that, and some great news from today, Chris Norwood down at the wastewater treatment plant passed his wastewater certification III, which is a very difficult certification to pass, and that is the level of our treatment plant, so he will be our third staff member with a level III, and we are shooting for one more in Bart Hill who is testing as we speak, so we'll see how he does.
That's great.
And that concludes my report from Public Works.
All right, any questions for Craig Gregory? Keep up the good work.
No, I just want to say, yeah, I'm kind of like, need to go home and take a nap because everything I learned today, but, good going.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks.
All right, next we're going to have a report from our financial, new Financial Director Services, Nola.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Welcome, Logan. Well, I've been here four entire weeks, so I do have a report for you. We've worked with Teresa Johnson CPA firm, and with their assistance, we have been able to submit to the Washington State Auditor's Office the 2015 annual report. So that is done. Following that, I'll be working on finalizing the federal EMA report. EMA is an acronym for Electronic Municipal Market Access. Basically, it's a continuing disclosure report that's filed through this federal website for entities reporting debt, so I'll be finalizing that and submitting that next week. As far as 2017 business licenses, the, in December, the finance team mailed out just over 1,600 business license renewal forms. About two-thirds of those were completed and submitted back to us by the end of December. As of today, we only have about 375 of those outstanding. We have about 30 account closures, and of the $48,000 in business license revenue that we have projected for this, we've collected about $36,000 of that already. As far as business and occupation tax returns for 2016, the same roughly 1,600 return forms were sent out in December, about 100 of those have been submitted so far. The due date on those isn't until January 31st, so we'll be getting the rest of those in over the next couple of weeks. Payroll and benefits, Megan Croson processed our first payroll of the new year. She worked on Sunday, New Year's Day, she worked on Monday, the observed New Year's holiday, and we have a plan for addressing that issue, so she won't have to do that in the future, but we did get that processed with our new benefit rates for 2017 incorporated into that. As far as financial software, we have been working with our financial software, we meet with them every other week over the phone, and one of the pieces we're working on is converting from an old credit card payment system called Via Warp to a new one called Bridge Pay, and the, and I think Tim might talk a little bit about this as well. Bridge Pay credit card system allows direct posting into our financial software, so it reduces the staff time of having to enter it in two places, reduces that, improves efficiencies. We're also test driving, running W2s and 1099s directly out of our financial software. Last year, there was an attempt made with that, but the software had some issues and they were not able to, to do it. So one of the goals this year is that we will be able to run that directly out of the software, and so far, it looks like that's going to work. We're working on setting up direct deposit for all of our employees. Right now, we write physical checks and have to deliver those around to people, and direct deposit is a lot more efficient, a lot easier. We're in the process of meeting with employee groups to discuss that, and we're hoping for a go-live date of April 1st. Part of transitioning to having everyone on direct deposit would be shifting our pay dates from the 5th and 20th of each month to the 10th and 25th. This will address the issue, circling back to payroll and benefits, of the timeline for processing a payroll cycle. Right now, we have to basically have everybody submit time sheets a few days before the end of the month and project what the time will be, and then make adjustments in order to get the payroll exactly right, and it's a very difficult timeline for processing, so we're going to try to address that as part of the direct deposit issue. And just getting everybody on direct deposit is really going to save a lot of time and staff work for that. We're also exploring the possibility of emailing out utility billings utilizing the financial software for this. Now, we're just beginning to touch on that, so we don't have a lot of the details figured out without, but that is one of the things we've discussed with our financial software vendor, and we're going to continue to explore that possibility. As far as some other streamlining projects that we're looking at, one of those is trying to simplify our chart of accounts a little bit. We have quite an extensive chart of accounts, a little over 1,700 expense and revenue asset liability accounts, so I'm going to be looking at, seeing if we can streamline that a little bit. We're also looking at reducing the instances of writing separate handwritten checks, and we're going to be trying to incorporate into our normal accounts payable cycles, the writing of all of these various checks. Handwriting separate checks takes a lot of staff time, it's a lot of energy, and it's pretty easy to roll that right into the accounts payable normal cycle, so we're going to try to do that as much as possible. There may be instances where we really do need to write a separate. There may be instances where we really do need to write a separate handwritten check. If it's an emergency or an urgent situation, we will certainly do that. So we're also looking at other ways to streamline our voucher approval process internally. And one of those is having, once a manager or a department head has approved an invoice, they should not have to go back and revisit that at all. Right now, our process is such that the department heads and managers will approve each individual invoice, and we process those through accounts payable. And then there's a voucher cover sheet that the managers have to scurry around and sign once it's run through the system and ready for your approval. And what we want to do is try to eliminate that step and replace it with a simpler one, since the manager or department head has already approved the individual invoices. They really don't need to go back and look at it again. And we'll probably set up a review process where I will be reviewing everything once it's gone through the system and had appropriate approvals. So that's one of the pieces we're working on as well. We're also looking at some 2017 staff development and training opportunities, and I'm meeting with the staff and trying to get a little better feel for what they're interested in doing to expand their skill and knowledge base so that they can better perform their jobs. That's finance. Any questions?
You have been busy.
I need a nap.
It's been a busy four weeks.
Good job.
Thank you, Nola.
No questions.
Well, just thank you very much. You know, we're really glad to have you as part of our team, and we're looking forward to, yeah, the streamlining and stuff like that, and the computer checks where it just comes in your mailbox, or it comes however you, you know, or direct deposit, that's all, indirect deposit, yeah. So that way I can get my hands on my check. It just comes there, so. All right, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Good job.
All right, next we have an update from Vicki Look, our assistant manager, city manager, and so, there you go.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. We've been busy in the administration by, we've had a few recruitments, did a civil service recruitment in the PD, and Lynn retired, so we're busy trying to fill her position. It's a records clerk, and that's reaching the final stages. And I just wanted to comment when we interviewed Logan, I had no idea you all knew him.
Oh, yeah.
So just to say, he did a really great interview, and we're glad he's on board with us. We have created a new position through the budget process, and Ryan and I have been working on that, and it is for a communications and economic development officer. We completed the job description, and it's now posted on our website, and we will be putting it out into different organizations, AWC, and making sure we get a broad audience out there that hopefully will find some folks that are really interested in coming to the city and going to work for us. So there's a few things like that. Ryan, did you have anything you wanted to touch on?
Can you explain what that job will consist of?
Well, the position will be reporting directly to Ryan, so he probably has a little better idea of what he's looking for, so.
Sure, we can talk about it briefly. So the main role will be communications. We want to make sure that we're maintaining a direct line of communication, not just with the press in the area, but also directly with the citizens of Shelton. And we're going to touch on that a bit, about what our social media presence has done in the last month and a half since we started our accounts. That'll be a component. And the other side will be economic development. So we're looking for somebody that can come in and help us to develop our economic development plan, somebody that can help work with the different agencies in town, primarily the Economic Development Council and also the Chamber, to make sure that we're on top of recruitment and retention of businesses.
So this will be one person with those two responsibilities?
Correct.
Yes, and then the last part of our presentation today is going to be asking Tim to come up and give us a little report on what our website's been doing and the Facebook page.
All right, welcome, Tim.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is just a brief overview on our new city website and our social media presences. The new redesigned City of Shelton website was launched on December 1st. It launched with a new simplified and more secure domain name of Sheltonwa.gov. And the new website allows the City of Shelton to offer a more visually appealing and functional website design. We have multiple apps that allow more interaction between citizens and city staff, and the new website is mobile-friendly, meaning that the design changes to match the visitor's device, so it looks just as nice on a cellphone as it does with a desktop computer. We also have integration between the website and our new social media sites. And the content management system enables staff to create and edit content for their departments, and we don't have to have a dedicated single person or two people that are running graphic design software in order to do that. It's more like a Word interface that allows you to do that. And since the website has been up, I've visited a Google Analytics site and procured some of the data. We are getting about double the users visiting our new website versus our old one, and we're getting about three times more page views per day. So any questions or comments for me regarding the website?
I think it's beautiful.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, the company did a really good job in designing for us.
Yeah.
Okay. The city launched a Facebook and Twitter accounts in November of last year. I worked with Dylan Barrett, our communications officer, in getting that set up. And our Facebook page, over the last 30 days, we've had 244 deliberate visits to our Facebook page, meaning somebody directly accessed that Facebook page instead of stumbling upon it. We've reached 19,187 people with content, and we've had 5,485 instances of post engagement. If you don't know what that means, it means that somebody either commented, or shared, or viewed a photo on our Facebook page. That's over 5,000 times. An example of some of the Facebook posts that we've, the engagement that we've had is, there was a post on Christmas tree pickup that was saw by 2,149 people. The stop sign install post, that had, has been seen as of this morning by 2,942 people. And the big money winner that we had was the Pioneer Way road closure that was posted, I think that was yesterday. That one was seen by 8,212 people, and 101 of those people shared it with their friends. So the Facebook and Twitter engagement has been, I think, a total success. It allows us to get information out quickly and to directly dialogue with our citizens. So any questions for me?
Sounds good.
Yeah, I have a question. As far as the interactions with other Facebook users, are they, is there, does somebody monitor what gets posted, or?
Yes, Dylan would probably speak better to that, but that's kind of in the communications officers. But yes, we do monitor the posts and the shares. And I guess some of the other things that I would say is that we're trying to, we had a Shelton Police and a City of Shelton Facebook page that wasn't an official City of Shelton entity at that time, and we're, we want to have a verified and established city's Facebook presence and Twitter presence so that they know for certain that they're communicating with the City of Shelton and not somebody calling themselves the City of Shelton.
So for Facebook, what do you go on?
It is facebook.com/sheltenwa.
Is that on the web?
City of Shelton wa.
Is that on the webpage?
Correct, it is.
Okay.
Right up to the top right on the website. There's links direct to Twitter, Facebook, and YouTube, where we see your great videos too.
So has there been, I just want to make sure that I understand, so I would think it would take a lot of time if you have to, if you are allowing comments, does it take a lot of your time to monitor how often the comments come in and if they're, you know, appropriate, or?
Do you want to come up and speak to that, Dylan?
Yeah, so as I'm sure you know with Facebook, you get notifications each time there's a comment directed to the city or in reference to something that the city's done. And so that happens, you know, a handful of times a day, and it is, it's quick just to respond, to reply if it's a question or a comment. So yeah, people do comment. We allow comments and interactions. This morning, there was a, there was a question about the stoplight at Wallace Nealon Boulevard that was out, and so it was just a quick response.
Oh, wonderful. Yeah, good.
So in your monitoring, so if somebody uses vulgarity, or if somebody's attacking somebody, you pull those things out, is that what you do?
So there is a social media policy that we've got, and it addresses all those sort of appropriate uses. And so, yeah, there are filters for profanity and things like that.
Yeah, okay. Good.
Great, sounds good. Yeah, I've been really impressed with it, with the response of the Facebook. Wasn't sure how much time you had to put into it, but that makes sense if you get that little notification to take care of it right away. Good. So so far, just one person is administering that?
Yeah, for the most part. There are a number of people who have access, but for the most part, it's me who is monitoring the Facebook page.
Okay, great.
All right, Vicki.
So just a little bit of a clarification. Dylan came here and helped us get Facebook up and running, helped us develop the policy and all those sorts of things, and he's done a great job for us, and he has submitted his resignation.
No, I refuse.
So we will not have two communication officers working for us, but he's done a great job, and he's ready to move along, so he's, I think, last day's the 13th.
All right, well, my interaction with him has been very good, very nice young man, and so we greatly appreciate what you've done to help City of Shelton move forward.
Thank you. I appreciated my time here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does that completes your report, your update?
Yes.
So we're in the, coming into the 21st century, aren't we, finally?
Finally.
Yeah.
Now, before you do administration reports, this is kind of in there, and I found out that we have a major conflict of scheduling, a scheduling conflict. And I would like to ask to see if this commission would concur on moving a time for our next meeting, because it is a mayor's reception over in Olympia next Tuesday night, and Ryan's never been to many AWC functions, and it's very important him and I both attend this. And that comes in at 5:00 to 7:00, and our commission meeting's at 6:00. So what I would like to do is see if we couldn't, I would like to be here and there. I would like to see if we couldn't move the evening meeting on the 17th to a day meeting on the 17th. So I think that would be my request, or else I would not be here. And it's not good that the mayor and the city manager's not here, and I would really like him to come with me. I think it's important for city business, so.
Fine with me.
Is?
Yeah, I don't have any objections.
Is that okay? So what do you think about that? Does that make sense, that we do that? We don't do it very often. I think we've only done it once in like five years or something. But because this is very important, and also is networking with people that can help bring money back to Shelton, little things like that, that I certainly think are important. So at this point, I don't know that we need a motion, we just concur that we'd like to move that. So now we can go into any administration final touches?
Two things.
Okay.
Mayor and Commissioners, first thing is that we're going to bring forward a slight change to the prospectus for the SR3 grant. So this is with regard to the grant that we put forward to you a few weeks ago. We decided to turn back. We just need to clarify with them the work that was done versus the work that we originally said we're going to do, so nothing's changing in terms of what we told you. We just need to make sure that the prospectus that was presented to them is appropriate and accurate. The other thing is that today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, so when you see the chief or one of the officers from the police department.
He's out in the back of the room. Should he speak or something?
Yeah, that would be a great idea.
Could you please come for, could we please come forward and make a statement on behalf of law enforcement at this time?
Thank you. And on behalf of the law enforcement officers everywhere, we appreciate the support we get out in the City of Shelton. We had cakes and cookies delivered from residents over here this morning, so it's been very, very nice. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief Moody.
That's it.
Okay, and that concludes that. Okay, so our next meeting will be on Tuesday, because we have a holiday on Monday, and that meeting will not be at 6:00 PM, it'll be 2:00 PM in the afternoon, and this meeting is adjourned.[1535.78]